Good evening and welcome. It is with great privilege and pleasure that I sit before you on this beautiful Tuesday, November 20th. The time is 6:30 and I call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with an invocation by Father Pete and then Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Carrasco. Please rest.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Counsel, and all of you. My prayer with you this day is very much a simple one and then is to call all of us to look into our hearts and to see what we are grateful for this week of Thanksgiving, which I know you have many things to thank God for that are in your personal lives and the lives that those of you who are here before me are entrusted to serve. So let us pray. Gracious and loving Father, we come to you with grateful hearts for creating us in your own image and likeness, and in doing so, you have called us to be people of love, people of peace and people of joy. We thank you for our mayor and our counsel and those who help them run the city of Alice, for their hearts are dedicated to making sure that each and every citizen within the boundaries of this city have every reason to give you thanks for all that they do, because all that they do has the good in their heart of their neighbor. We ask that you continue to fill them with the guidance of the Holy Spirit, which will always guide our mayor and counsel and city to do everything they can to labor out of love for every man, woman, and child that calls Alice home, so that each and every person who calls Alice home, who has their business within these city limits, will always know that they truly have a servant in our mayor, in our counsel, and in our city employees. We thank you for that gift that you have given to us, which they are. But Lord, we also thank you, because they are also moms and dads, uncles, aunts, and children. They too give you thanks for all those that they are able to go home to each and every day. They also give you thanks for those who surround them as family. May nothing keep us this week, as we approach the day of Thanksgiving, from just seeing the blessedness and the beauty of the day that we are able to enter and do with that day what you call us to do. Make it a day consecrated and dedicated to you, which will always be a day that we always give for our neighbor out of what we are able to do as the city of Alice, which is to give our every effort to assure the homes, the businesses, and the citizens who call Alice home, a true confidence in what our counsel does always, for what they do is always indeed to bless them in what they do, which is to live and have their livelihood here in our home of Alice. Bless each and every one of us here, those watching, those who are present. Continue to watch over those who guard us and protect us and hear our cry when the alarm goes off. See them to their duties safely and soundly and see them home always safely and soundly to their families. And once again, may our hearts be filled with the gratitude to you for having blessed us with our mayor, our counsel, our city, our citizens. Together you make us all brothers and sisters because of the love, peace, and joy you fill us with to share with one another. And we ask that you bless everyone as we approach Thanksgiving and bless that meal that they will share together, but most especially bless those that they will share it with and the time that they will spend together. And we ask all this in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Father Pete. That was beautiful.
If we could please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item number two, citizen comments and public announcements. At this time, we don't have any citizen comments. None? All right. Go on to public announcements. Ms. Carrasco, do you have anything today?
The only thing is to wish our citizens, our family and friends a happy Thanksgiving and just thankful and grateful for everything and may we always serve in the best interest of our cities.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Happy and blessed Thanksgiving to each of you, your families, and many blessings on your homes.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. Crisp?
The same thing. I just want everybody to remember about what the season's for. You know, it's not just about football in Turkey, it's about family. So enjoy the time you spend with each other and if you have to travel or other members travel to get together, let's pray that they travel safely. It's very important that they get to and from these events, you know, to be able to spend time with them. Next thing is y'all keep your eyes open. It starts relatively quickly on the fourth. The 12 Days of Christmas is gonna be kicking off and that's cosponsored or, you know, put together by the Chamber. There'll be multiple days of events, well, 12 days' worth of events, hello? 12 days' worth of events, starting with our parade and ending with our Saturday Shop Local. So check out the Chamber website and see what great events that we have planned, so.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mr. Molina?
Same thing, just wanna bounce off that. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And I would like to take this time to thank a few groups. A lot of times, we are the faces, what you see up here, but there are so many people that it takes to make the machine work. And our machine is nicely oiled right now. So at this time, I'd like to thank a few people that you won't see, but you're gonna see their works. The Keep Alice Beautiful Commission has been put together and they're moving in the right direction. You're gonna see their work downtown. That's one of their first projects to work on the planners downtown. It's a group of wonderful people with great ideas to make Alice beautiful and keep it beautiful, so I'm super proud of that group. Also, I would like to thank NOAA, which is, I know I'm a little biased, it's one of my favorites, our pet shelter, our privately taken care of pet shelter, works on donations. They take care of our fur babies that don't have homes. I have two of them. But they do so much that we don't see and they, I have to thank our interim police chief for reaching out and saying, yes, come in and help us along with our city manager to allow them to come in and help us to take care of our shelter. And they're doing a lot with our shelter that you probably will never know or see, but they've volunteered to do the extras out there too and work together with the city of Alice to give our fur babies a safer and healthier environment and get them adopted. So I'm super excited about that. And then also our snow day, we will have snow on the seventh in Alice, Texas, regardless if it's 105 or 5. We're gonna have snow. So the Chamber sponsored by a few people, Thomas J. Henry is sponsoring and a few local sponsors, I'm not sure, but we are gonna have snow again. So yes, last year, we had fake snow that kicked off the real snow, so who knows this year?
It's moving to Anderson Park.
And it's at Anderson Park, yes, a little bigger venue. We had a great turnout last year and it was really cold and wet and all of that, so we kinda learned what we did there and now moving it to Anderson Park and that's with, in conjunction with the Alice Echo Journal or News, so that's another group of people that come together and do these cool things and, you know, we get the credit, but a lot of times, it's not just us, it's people working together as a community. And the next one who I'd like to thank and is here with us today is Wells Fargo. So Wells Fargo is gonna come up, y'all can come up, and they have been a big part in our park, Health Park, right here, the little park beside City Hall. They have been huge donators of this project. And it started with a great conversation with me and Ms. Rose, just talking and bouncing off ideas at a meeting and she said, you know, I think we really need a set up a meeting. And I'm like, she says, I have some money. And I'm like, absolutely, we will set up a meeting today. And she's like, well, hang on, let me put it in my schedule. So we did and with that, we're actually on phase two with the help of Wells Fargo to make this little park become what it is. And I know so many people have noticed it and seen the little beauty spurts that we've had with it and so I would like to formally thank y'all on behalf of myself and the city of Alice. This has been an amazing thing, so they, counsel, would y'all like to go? They're gonna present the check to us and...
You want me to take a picture?
Yes, please. Can you do that here? Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you, Odi.
Yes. Just have to make sure the check's straight. What? Okay. Oh, Pete, can you kinda scoot? Oh, Cindy, I can't see you, Cindy. There you go. Okay, there you go. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. And this is phase two. Yes. So this is only, this is the second part, because they did provide us with phase one, which was in the amount of 3,500. So they've done a great deal and I thank y'all so, so much. Like honestly, that's been so awesome. Little, little cool little... Second part. Second part, that's right, because they did some, yes. So total combined in three years, we've done almost $10,000. That is awesome. This is what I'm talking about. There's so many people behind the scenes doing great things for our city that we never really realized, but they're literally our own neighbors and people that appreciate being in Alice and we appreciate y'all very much for being in Alice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not surprised. Mm-hmm. Very good.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and act upon approval of city council minutes for the October 23rd, 2018 city council meeting.
Mayor, we provided a revised correction.
Even in the revised ones, I just noticed that in some of them, they were actually just missing the titles and it's just the...
Formatting.
Yeah, just formatting and the council members themselves and just the consistency in it. So I'm, aside from, aside from just the titling, because like in, let's say, number nine, it doesn't say anything about, you know, and it's just, you know, wording, but it doesn't say like council member Ron Burke, you know, or the mayor pro tem or council member. And then for, like myself, I couldn't care less whether it says council member or mayor pro tem, but I think for consistency's sake, we need to pick one and stick with it instead of bouncing back and forth.
Sure.
So those need to be fixed there.
Okay, counsel, any other corrections or comments? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes with the denoted changes. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pose, same sign. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item number four, and counsel, it looks like we had an addendum to that attached.
One, four.
Uh-huh. City manager report, letter from Texas Water Development Board, recent power outages, San Diego Creek levy, technology improvements, check register postings, holiday schedule for garbage pickup, and December meeting schedule. Mr. Sparza?
Yes, ma'am. We included in your packet the official letter from the Water Development Board. It's gonna be half of the agenda item number seven. It's the wastewater project, but this is the official letter embodying this, this is an application for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. I just wanna include that so y'all can see what that looked like. We'd been working on that for a while. Finally came in, although we started the RFQ process knowing that they had kinda told us, yeah, you're gonna make the cut. We didn't receive it officially, but we wanted to get ahead of the game and do the RFQ, so here's the letter. And then agenda item number seven is gonna kind of address that part of it too. So it's that on the recent power outages, I wanted to give y'all in the public an update. You know, we had a recently, well, AEP had some power outages and they were large portions of the city. The Patrick King with AEP came by after the last power outage, which was, happened in the evening, went on to, you know, midnight, one in the morning, and it was a pretty big power outage. And with that next day, he came by and visited with me and gave me a rundown of what had happened previously. The first power outage we had, which was maybe a couple hours, maybe three or four hours, that was caused by a balloon that touched some lines close to the substation. One of those party balloons that have the foil on the outside. They're Mylar balloons, but now to make them shiny, they do put some metal on the outside and paint it on and those things will cause power outages and that's what happened on that first one. The second small power outage was similar. They did find a balloon tied to a line as well, but there was a, something was broken in the substation, part of a circuit, so it was a combination of things. But the longer power outage we had was a transmission line that brought, brings the power from through Bunket to Alice, our substation here. And that power line was down and once they found it, the ground was wet, they had to get a tracko to be able to, track equipment rather than wheels, to be able to get to the location and finally get that up. And the last one that they had, they've been working on the substation, which is right on Stadium. They've been working on that for a while and when they're, they were trying to isolate certain circuits. And it's, so they plug things in into one circuit and let it run that way, similar to plugging a lot of things into one outlet in your home. And so when that happened, it was, of course, it was cold. Power lines actually sag when they get warm or they're having a current through there and they'd cause an outage as well. And they were trying to isolate that one and that did take a while, but the way they found it is, once they got the power back up, the power line close to the substation would sag and touch the common and it would, you know, trip it and ruin the circuit. Somebody close to the substation called in the sparks when it happened and so they were able to go out there and see it actually happening. So that next, the following day, when, after he gave me this report, he did say that the work at the substation was complete, so they weren't gonna double up on circuits anymore. They had finished that. So it was just kind of a, one after another after another. That also allowed us to work on some of our systems. That one, and you were here for the SOFT EOC we opened and we worked on some emergency management as well and realized that we do need a few things that we need to work on, like emergency lighting in City Hall to be able to operate. And, but on the emergency side, as far as 911, that's, you know, always working even with a power outage. Those are on a different system. But we do need to still work a little bit on our phone systems and how we treat those during power outages and how we forward the calls. So it was, it was a good work for us and a good experiment and so, I mean, we learned from that and we're moving forward on trying to correct some things that need corrections on power outages for us. The San Diego Creek Levy, that's a project we've been working on for a while. I wanted to give you all an update on that. We, the levy was in, is kind of in schedule to being decertified because of work that, that was wanting to be required. And all, the whole levy is, it's based on our base flood elevation, which is a number that FEMA puts on, on, you know, the flood zone, 100-year flood zone. We, before we entered into trying to correct these issues, we had our engineering department and went out there and actually looked at it and, and we just noticed something just didn't seem right. If you, if you're at the south wall, actually, the levy is a south wall that runs along San Diego Creek in the Cameron area from 281 all the way almost to Texas Boulevard. And if you stand there, you can see how low it is on the north side. There's no levy on the north side. That's just the berm that's built there, were pretty much spoils of the earth that they took out when they built that back in the 50s. So we did our own surveying and realized that the number, the base flood elevation that FEMA has and what we think should be is off. So we've been working on that and it's a long process dealing with federal government, but we did have a trip to Galveston, met with Army Corps of Engineers. They were very helpful. We've been working with FEMA, Jose Paredes with Philamon Villa's office. Our congressman, Jose, has been really helpful setting up meetings. He got us in contact with FEMA. Joe Salisbury in our engineering department has taken the lead on this and, and we actually were able to have two conference calls with FEMA. They, they see the difference in their number and ours and they're telling us when they entered numbers in, they pretty much used old numbers that they had. And so in order to, there's a process to kind of adjust the base flood elevation. And so what we finally, we've been hounding them for a long time and so they did say that we are on the top of the list for review. They don't get funding until March or April. The money gets, starts to get spent in September. And so the only projects that are ahead of us as far as reviewing and doing a hydrology study or, and any kind of surveys are gonna be projects that were already funded, but maybe they didn't get funded completely. So new projects, we're on the top of their list. So hopefully, we'll be able to have some closure to the levy, but it is gonna be, you know, next year sometime and probably in the summer when they start looking at that and, and doing some more studies and, and some more surveys. But it's promising, you know, we just didn't, we didn't wanna spend the initial money when it doesn't look like we may have to. We just need to get the maps corrected. The technology improvements, I wanted to go over, we have finished the phone system updates and we had, we did have some, some issues trying to get those, we got those, or getting those corrected. We have some switches that needed to be, that needed to be improved and Jim may chime in here in a second, but we did get those purchased. We also have had a slow internet connection and that was kind of an issue with the phones. We have a very good phone system, but we're tweaking how it rings and where it rings and those are internal things that we need to work on. And you wanna talk a little bit about that, Jim?
Yeah, the network switches we had in City Hall here were like 12 years old, so they were way too slow and they wouldn't let us segment the traffic off for the voice, for the phones, so we got those switched out. We're getting a new firewall installed at the police department and then they'll get all the switches segmented out, so we'll be able to get a better connection for the phones and then now we're gonna have a 100 meg connection at, at the police department that also feeds here, so that we'll be able to do better than that. I think we have 25 right now. So this is part of the overall plan to cancel the old phones and the old internet and pay for all this with the money that that was costing us.
And on the, we do have a new 100 MBPS line that's running to the police station, which runs over here too, which serves our internet. And that is spectrum, when we got that approved spectrum, had us on the list and it was almost a two-month waiting list to get that done. They finally got it done last week and it's sitting there now. We just need to get absolute contractor to come and configure it and plug it in and that's gonna help with a lot of the traffic that we have on the phone system and the emails. So the emails are up. We do have dual servers running right now, our in-house and also on the cloud, so there may be some issues that we'll be working on on y'all's phones, but tomorrow, we're gonna do a final check on the, turning off the in-house email server in the morning. And, and so we'll try those emails in the morning and see who gets kicked back and who doesn't. But we all will have the ability to turn that back on. But we're hoping that after tomorrow, we'll be off the old system and be completely cloud based on that.
Right, yeah.
And the emails also give us the OneDrive to have our files on the cloud and also the shared, shared drive is what they call it on Office 360.
SharePoint, SharePoint, yeah. But we'll all have one terabyte of space on OneDrive. It's more like for personal stuff, but then we can do the SharePoint if we wanna share more among groups and stuff like that.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim.
On the check register postings, about a month and a half ago, Jim sent an email, he's on some of these message boards, and it caught my attention. It was an article, it was an email from City of Brian, their tech guy, and they took their check register off, off the, off the internet, off their website. And they did it because there's been a growing amount of, you know, fraud that's happening. There's people that are trolling municipalities especially and they'll, they'll look at your check history, they'll try to find a vendor that they know is gonna get paid and they'll, they can, you know, try to impersonate that company, send an email, say, by the way, here's a new checking account with routing number and, you know, finance may get it and say, hey, this is the person I know. And they do it. And Houston, I believe, lost some money. The City of Brian, I actually called them when I saw that and I talked to the deputy finance director and, and they almost got, got taken for a couple hundred thousand dollars the same way. Kind of a teller on the other end in another state actually noticed something a little different and I think that's how they prevented that. So I think, you know, we were talking about it with finance and with Jim, that probably a better practice, you know, is not to have it on there, you know, not, not to, not to have that threat anymore and keep our information more secure, although it's still public information, but what we'll have is a link. If somebody wants that, they can click on our website and get a link and we'll send it to them. And the other part is, what we're gonna start doing is just giving you guys a handout of that or an email of that as kind of a checks and balances. You know, you guys represent the public and so you'll be able to see those check registers. We just want there to be an extra layer rather than just having their, having that open for, for people to try to take advantage and try to, you know, commit fraud and try to do those kind of things. So that, we're gonna start that next week, Jim? Removing those and then putting the link? Okay. Our holiday schedule for garbage pickup, we wanted to let the public know that tomorrow, let's see, Monday and Tuesday happened as normal routes. Tomorrow is gonna be Thursday's garbage collection, so we'll be closed Thursday and Friday. And Saturday, we are gonna have commercial, commercial pickup to help with some of the restaurants and places like that. So our sanitation crew will be, will be out there working on Saturday. And the landfill will also be open on Saturday. So there won't be garbage pickup on Thursday and Friday.
And Fridays won't be made up? It's just gonna carry over to next week?
Yeah. Right. Okay. December meeting schedule, wanted to sort of run this, well, we've been doing the, our card requires one meeting per month and we did that in October and this meeting also in, in December, we'll, we'll do that again. And so we're leaning toward the third Tuesday of the month again. If we're waiting on some, there may be some bids that come in that may need to come before you guys and if that works with y'all, we would schedule it for that day.
It'd be the 18th.
It'd be the 18th.
Counsel, any projections to the 18th?
Fine, let me.
Mr. Molina?
I'm fine.
Mr. Crisp?
Good.
Mr. Burke?
Good.
Ms. Carrasco?
So?
And I'm good. Time?
Same.
6:30 same?
Yeah, we can do the same time.
And we're confident covering all the information we need to?
Yes.
During that time? Okay. Very good.
Okay. Did, I don't know if y'all got the, an additional handout. The FEMA did approve, they did send us back our hazard mitigation plan.
Okay.
We talked about it last meeting. It's been approved, they actually sent it back to us now. We'll make some copies. If any of y'all wanna copy, we can, we can make one for you. Typically, you know, our emergency management coordinator and our emergency management director will have a copy handy, but we'll have a couple extra here if you do wanna, wanna review it. It's a... It's a pretty big binder with some information there, but it did come back on the 14th and approved. That's of course what opens it up to be able to, to apply for some of the grants, like the generator grants that we had, other hazard mitigation grants.
Very good.
And so we were excited to have it come back, approved. And I think that's all I have. Mayor?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Esparza. Agenda item number five, consider and act upon authorizing staff to publish or issue a notice to bidders for sealed bids for sale and/or lease of city-owned property in whole or a portion of, described as the Old Boys and Girls Club, 3001 Old Kingsville Road, Alice, Jimwells County, Texas.
Okay. I believe that this is, as far as the sale, it, it may have gone out for a sealed bid before, but we, we did have a lease or, and we're out of the lease. There's still somebody there and we're month to month, but we're out of lease terms on, on the Old Boys and Girls Club building. And so we, we wanted to, to, to ask for you guys to authorize us to do another sealed bid for lease and the potential sale of all our portion, you know, depending on if somebody wants, wants to do that, wants a bid on the whole thing or just a part of it. And on, did you have the maps in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The Boys and Girls Club, the old building there and the swimming pool and the parking lot would be a good fit to carve out if somebody was just interested in that. And then we could still keep the basketball courts and the other parking lot and the baseball practice fields in the back. But it's just, you know, we, it's that time, we had a lease and it was expired and we needed to, to do another sealed bid. So I figured maybe we'd want to take it off our hands and see if somebody was interested in, in purchasing that and we talked to our city attorney and the sealed bid, yeah. And so on, on the sealed bid, of course, we'll, we'll put some time on there and ask for, for a lease and then also ask for sealed bids on a combination of either all of it or just a portion of, of these and see what we get back.
Not specific to any kind of breaking whatever, like if somebody just wanted the fields and the court or vice versa, there's no?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that we would, we would probably look at it best to be, and we, we can do another portion if we needed to, where it's just the field, the backfield. That'd be probably interested in only on the neighbors. You know, we'd have to have a, they'd have to have an easement or something.
Okay.
And it gets a little more complicated. But this is what we kind of thought would may work for somebody.
Mm-hmm.
The building facilities and then...
Do you think that we should consider the idea of breaking it up also to include just the, the building itself, sorry, the building itself and the parking area and exclude the swimming pool because that might be an option too, where somebody may be more interested if we don't say, hey, you have to take the swimming pool from us. You know what I mean? We have to keep, keep the options open out and out there so that people are actually interested in taking this off of our hands and not trying to force something down their throat.
The way that he's got it worded in the agenda, they can make whatever offer.
Right. For any part, uh-huh. That's okay.
Good.
So really, there's no limit. Okay, good.
Well, I just wanted to put that out there too.
Yes, sir.
That we, the same way that, that we break it down that way, yeah. That's good.
Okay. Very good. Counsel, any, any other questions?
And that's for purchase or lease?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Molina, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Crisp, any additional?
None at this time.
Mr. Burke?
No questions.
Ms. Kadasco? Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time, counsel.
Mayor, I make a motion to authorize staff to publish and issue a notice to bidders for sealed bids for sale and/or lease of city-owned property in whole or portion, pardon me, described as the Old Boys and Girls Club, 3001 Old Kingsville Road, Alice, Texas, Jimwells County, Texas.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion stands as stated. Thank you. Agenda item number six, discuss, consider and act upon adopting a resolution authorizing A, the city manager to execute on behalf of the City of Alice, Texas, at the appropriate time and with the appropriate authorizations of the city council, all contracts and agreements with the State of Texas represented by the Texas Department of Transportation and such other parties as shall be necessary and appropriate for the development and implementation of the airport layout plan update with narrative for the Alice International Airport. And B, authorizing the commitment of the city's half estimated to be 6,250 of the sponsor's 10% match. And C, designating the Texas Department of Transportation as the city's agent for the purposes of applying for, receiving and dispersing all funds for the ALP update with narrative and for the selection of the consultant and administration of contracts necessary for the implementation of this project.
Mayor, our grants administrator, Barbara Reeves, is going to present this.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. When we first discussed this project with you at our June 12th meeting, we asked you to authorize the city manager to submit a letter of interest to TechDOT's Office of Aviation for an airport development plan and airport layout plan update at an approximate cost of $200,000. We also asked you to authorize the city manager to sign grant contracts and all related documents if grant funds are awarded and authorize him to enter into an interlocal agreement with the county if grant funds are awarded. We did submit the letter of interest, June 18th. It was reviewed by our aviation planner and one of his colleagues. They thought that the scope was a little large and so they revised the scope to just be an airport layout plan update with narrative and also revised the estimated project cost. So currently, the estimated project cost for an airport layout plan with narrative is a hu, excuse me, $125,000. So 10% of that estimated total project cost is what the city and the county will split evenly as our match. And that comes out to be $6,250 per entity. We've checked with the county judge and with our finance department and have been told that the matching funds are available. The resolution before you tonight is the next step in this type of grant application. And once we pass this resolution and we're going to Commissioners Court November 30th with the same resolution, I'll submit the signed resolutions to the Office of Aviation and then they'll generate an invoice for the match. And I anticipate probably getting an invoice in December or January. Office of Aviation said this project will go to TechDOT Commission February 2019. So again, that, this is just the next step in applying for the funds. It's a different application process from other grant programs.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel, any questions? Ms. Kadasco? No? No. Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Crisp?
No.
And Mr. Molina?
No question.
Okay. There are no questions. I'll entertain a motion at this time, counsel. Anyone?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute on behalf of the City of Alice, Texas, at the appropriate time and with the appropriate authorizations of the city council, all contracts and all agreements with the State of Texas represented by the Texas Department of Transportation and such other parties as shall be necessary and appropriate for the development and implementation of the Alice, I'm sorry, of the airport layout plan update and narrative for the Alice International Airport. Second. Do we need to take them separately?
No.
It's all together.
That's good. That's good. Okay.
Second on the floor, can I, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion stands as stated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves, very much. Okay. Agenda item number seven, discuss, consider and act upon A, acceptance of evaluation committee's recommendations regarding hiring bond counsel, financial advisor and engineering firms in response to RFQ number 2018-10-25-015 to provide engineering, legal and financial analysis services for a project involving supplementing water resources for the city and PIF number 12622 and for a project involving the city's wastewater collection infrastructure, PIF number 12813. And B, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with the firms recommended by the evaluation committee. I believe at this time, we have people to...
Yeah, there may, may be some, I know Mr. Bill Norris is here with Norris Lial. What I'd like to do is have Barbara go and, and go over the agenda item and if somebody out there wants to speak on it, they, you can ask them to come up after that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Counsel, during our September 25th meeting, staff was authorized to issue and request for qualifications for bond counsel, financial advisor and for engineering services for our groundwater and wastewater collection infrastructure projects that we're working with Texas Water Development Board on. As we prepared the RFQ, we used resources that the Texas Water Development Board provided regarding list of disadvantaged business enterprises. As you will recall, we determined the need to follow that procurement process in order to pay for these consultants with proceeds from the loans from Texas Water Development Board. The RFQ was published October 10th and October 17th. In addition to the publications, the RFQ was emailed to approximately 22 firms. Deadline for submitting responses or statements of qualifications to the RFQ was October 25th at 2:00 PM. Three firms providing bond counsel services responded, five engineering firms responded and one financial advisory firm responded. Evaluation committee members are Roland Ramos, Joe Salisbury, Demetrio Duarte and myself. We met Friday, November 2nd to discuss recommendations for each type of firm. And our recommendations are to authorize the city manager to negotiate contracts with the following firms. Estrada Hinojosa Investment Banker for financial advisory services. McCall, Parkhurst and Horton for bond counsel. Norris Lial for engineering services for our groundwater project. And LNV Engineering Services for the wastewater collection infrastructure project. At this time, the fiscal impact of hiring these consultants is unknown until we negotiate contracts.
And to give you an idea, we, we did have multiple firms. We sent this out, but on the financial advisor, we only got one bidding and we've used them before, Estrada Hinojosa. On the bond counsel, there were three. And on the engineering side, there were several, I think there was five. And, you know, up to you guys who you'd like to use. They went, our staff went through a mechanism of deciding, you know, who they felt more comfortable with based on the experience that they had and the projects that they had put on their statement of qualifications. And so on the, on the financial, on the engineering side for the groundwater, it was pretty clear that Norris Lial is, they, that's their specialty and they're well-known out there. And so that was a pretty easy thing for them to decide. On the wastewater side, everybody, the engineering firms were, were, were well-qualified. And so it was, you considered real close on, 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 on the recommendation. But of course, eventually it's up to you guys on, on who to decide. On the bond counsel, McCall that we've used before, they tend to work a lot with Estrada Hinojosa. And I think Roland's worked with them several times before, so they felt pretty comfortable on that recommendation. But definitely on, on the wastewater side, you know, it's, it was, it was kind of a toss-up between the firms like LJA and LNV and ICE. Hanson was up there, but I think they felt more comfortable with, with the other three on there. But they did have to make recommendations, so we had a long discussion about that after, you know, they brought this to me on where they felt everybody would fall. And I know that, let's see, Bill Norris is here if, if he'd like to, to address the council. Is that okay, Mayor?
Absolutely. Step part, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity. I've worked with the, with the city on the preliminary plan of this about three and four years ago. And I think this is probably one of the best financial feasible projects that I've seen in the state of Texas. And I'm really pleased and honored to come back and work for the city and get this project done for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't recognize anybody else, but I don't know if anybody else is here on, on the other firms.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Molina?
No questions.
No? Mr. Crisp?
And how did we, I mean, we, but because of the toss-up, was it a scaling thing that we settled on LNV? I mean, what exactly brought us to that one? Because the other ones, it seems like it was very, you know, these are the guys, these are the guy, you know what I mean? Like very much so. But what brought us there?
We reviewed the work experience, the project experience in each statement of qualification. And there were some features in some of the SOQs that, such as having prior experience working with Texas Water Development Board, having quality assurance, quality control program included, permitting experience. But all the firms that submitted with regard to wastewater had good work experience and listed, but it was just a matter of going through and finding some other features that maybe put them a little ahead.
Okay. No, and...
But they're, they all have the experience to do the job.
And I don't, I don't question necessarily, you know, y'all's recommendations. I just want to know how you come to, you came to those recommendations. I feel strongly in the, in the, the research that y'all did in order to make these recommendations, they don't come lightly before us. I just want to know exactly where we stood on that, so.
Also, to give you an idea on, on, on the, all the different engineering firms we're using right now, we are in relationships with actually, I think, everybody that, that bid on this wastewater. We are doing work with LJA on the TechDOT waterline expansion.
And the pump station.
And the...
And the pump station.
Oh, and the pump station, yeah, at, at Lake Corpus Christi. LNV is doing a generator project, that small project that we have before us. ICE, of course, is our in-house engineer, so we use them from time to time on, on special needs that we have. And Hanson is also doing the gas trench, gas trench eventing at the, at the landfill. So we, we've had relationships with all of them, you know?
Yes, yes.
And we, and we know the work.
And LNV as well?
Yes.
LNV, yes. They're, they're most recent on the generator project.
For the disaster declaration.
Yeah, on the disaster declaration.
So it was just a matter of going through what they listed and seeing, okay, some features that might have boosted them a little above.
Okay.
Another firm.
Mr. Crisp?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
And sometimes that, that matrix you use would be available to look at.
Yes, sir. We have the scoring sheet and then we have the matrix with the averages.
Yes.
Ms. Kadasco? All right. I'll entertain a motion at this time, counsel.
Mayor, I make a motion to move forward with the acceptance of the evaluation of the committee's recommendations regarding the hiring of bond counsel, financial advisor, engineering firms in response to the RFQ number 2018-10-25-015 to provide engineering, legal, engineering legal, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to put these on after all. And financial analysis services for a project involving supplementing water resources for the city and for the project involving the city's wastewater collection infrastructure, authorizing the city manager to negotiate the, a contract with the firms recommended by the evaluation committee.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
Somebody give the second?
Yes.
Second was...
Three, four, one against.
Okay.
Okay.
No.
Oh, you want the majority? Oh, sorry.
I bet he got...
I caught you late then.
'Cause I, I wasn't sure, there was a second, that's what it was.
Yes, sir.
So, it's all four, aye.
All four, so majority. Okay.
Thanks for clearing that up.
All good on seven?
Very good.
Number eight. Agenda item number eight. Discuss, consider, and act upon staff recommendation for the purchase of thirty tasers for the Alice Police Department over a five-year period.
Mayor, interim Police Chief Chet Lopez is gonna present this item.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, uh, City Council. I'll be presenting a PowerPoint presentation, um, and then the presentation, I'll be, uh, talking about two plans to see if we can purchase some tasers from Axon, so... First, I'm gonna be talking about the, uh, the taser. Uh, this is what we have right now. The first, the first taser we purchased was back in, uh, two thousand and eight. We purchased four tasers from, uh, actually, straight from Taser. Back then, it was only them. So, uh, Axon bought out Taser in, uh, two thousand and thirteen. So, in two thousand and thirteen, we purchased another twenty-eight units from Axon and Taser. So, right now, we, we have, uh, almost thirty tasers on the street, but some of those tasers are almost ten years old. So, you know, that's why we're here, trying to see if we can get some new ones. The, the first taser, sixty unlimited plan, this plan breaks down the cost of the weapon, the holster, training cartridges, field-use cartridges, and batteries into five annual payments. These are absolutely no, there's absolutely no interest or financing fees, and the weapons are covered on a five-year, no questions asked, asked warranty. If a taser breaks for any reason in the five years, they will be sent, they'll, they'll send us a new one. Every year, we will, we will receive three training cartridges for our annual training recertification. We gotta train every, every year, uh, and, and each one of us, each officer that I have, uh, has to go through three training cartridges, and they're expensive. Our cut for the annual training certificate, as many field cartridges, we, they also will provide as many field-use cartridges and batteries as we needed, free of shipping. The advantage to the plan is that we can budget with complete certainty for five years. Every taser consumable is covered on that annual payment. Our agency is also protected from future price increases of cartridges and batteries for five years, as they typically raise prices each year for about, at an average of three-point-five percent. And this is the, the, their one, the T sixty, they call it T sixty, with sixty months, unlimited plan. And what we get with that unlimited plan is, we get thirty X twenty-six tasers. This is the new, the newer version of Taser. What we carry right now is an X twenty-six. These are X twenty-six P. We'll get thirty of those, and with, and also, we'll get, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight, uh, right-hand holsters, two left-hand holsters, thirty batteries, ninety cartridge stimulation, that's what those cartridges will be, will be used for, for training. We'll get ninety of those. We'll get sixty twenty-five-foot hybrid cartridges. And, uh, we'll get, uh, I'll get the, the kit for the, to download the information of those tasers, and also upload, you know, information to them. As, in year two, let me go back up here. For the call, for the first year, it's gonna be nine thousand and thirty-eight dollars. Be nine thousand and thirty-eight dollars. The understanding is, the first payment will come out of the forfeiture account. So, the nine thousand and thirty-eight dollars will come out of the forfeiture account. Now, for the next four years, on year two, three, four, and five, we would have to budget into the budget somehow, because the next four payments will be eleven thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty. So, the sum, some of your breakdown here for the payments is, their list price is sixty-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. The discount's a four thousand and eighty-four dollars. So, a grand total of fifty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight. That's how much that plan's gonna cost for five years, the unlimited plan. The, this, the Taser sixty basic plan, this breaks up the cost of the weapon warranty holster, and five-year training cartridges, and batteries into the annual payments. Field-use cartridges will be purchased if needed. The agency will have, will purchase our cartridges and batteries at a fixed price in the future. So, for the first year on a T sixty basic plan, we'll get this, the, we'll get thirty X twenty-six P tasers, we'll get twenty-eight right-hand holsters, two left-hand holsters, and thirty battery packs for those tasers. We'll get sixty, instead of ninety, we'll get sixty cartridges for stimulation, uh, and also twenty-five hybrid, I mean, a twenty-five-foot hybrid cartridges, with sixty of those. And of course, one kit for the data point. The cost of this plan for the first year is seven thousand, five-hundred-and-eight dollars. Seven, seven thousand, five-hundred-and-eight. Of course, that will also come out of the forfeiture account if we go, if we choose to go that, that route. For the next two years, three years, four years, and five years, the payment will be eight, eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Summary of the payments, the list amount will be forty-five thousand, one-hundred-ninety-two dollars. The discount will be four thousand, eighty-four dollars, and the grand total will be forty-one thousand, one-oh-eight for that plan within five years. The cost analysis of both programs, the Taser sixty unlimited is hundred-and-fifteen dol, hundred-and-fifteen dollars more per weapon per year than the Taser sixty basic. The price of the, of three training cartridges and one cartridge is a hundred-and-thirteen dollars in two, in twenty-eighteen. With the annual, the annual rate of three-point-five increase, those four cartridges will cost about a hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars in a, in the year twenty-twenty-two. When you factor the price of the batteries, they also are sixty-two dollars each. The Taser sixty unlimited plan will save the department money and simply, or by budgeting, a secondary benefit to the, to the unlimited is the opportunity to conduct a, a more robust training each year with the additional training cartridges and batteries. Any, any questions? The difference between both, both plans?
Ms. Canasco?
I know, I know that the, uh, plan, uh, the unlimited plan and the basic plan, it's within its fifteen thousand dollars difference, so...
Yeah, but, uh, when we see what, what we actually do and, and how, when we use them, and the recertification, and just the cost of the cartridges, um, we are better off, just, even not, not talking about the batteries, uh, it'll be a wash, uh, fifty-five thousand, uh, over the course of the, you know, for the five years versus fifty-six for the unlimited. And if you throw in the batteries, which could be, if, you know, even if they last a, a year, or even half of them, uh, you know, that's another, you know, eight, nine-hundred dollars a year. And if we do the unlimited, then we don't worry about, about them at all, and, and we get replacements when we need them. Uh, and, uh, the thing is, and it's a sole-source vendor, we, we are in, in need of these. Um, after the term, they're ours, uh, and if we keep them like we did these, we'd have ten years after that, where we'll just be spending, let's say, the five thousand dollars a year in, in, in batteries and, um, uh, in cartridges. Uh, and it is above the fifty thousand dollar threshold, that's why it needs to come before you guys, uh, on the unlimited plan.
Ms. Canasco, any questions?
I guess those, you answered some of my questions. I wanted to know how often and...
Yeah, on the recertification, it's every, every year.
Every year, yes.
Twenty-five, uh, officers times the... Three cartridges apiece.
And if you have to buy one each, it's three thousand dollars, so it makes it a fifteen-hundred-dollar a year difference right there, so...
Expensive, but a good tool.
Ms. Canasco, any other questions?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Chris?
Just room. They are the same taser, or they're different? The actual device itself?
It's, it's, uh, it's upgraded. It's a newer version of it. Uh, it's, uh, the ones we have right now is the X twenty-six.
No, no, I'm, I mean, between the two package, the two plans.
Oh, the same taser, yes, sir.
It is exactly, yeah, because even in the, in the hardware, it actually says unlimited. You know what I mean? So, I was like, okay, is it actually a different device, or is it the same?
It's the same.
Same devices. So, it's the same device in both of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was it.
Mr. Molina? Okay. How do we have any questions either, Council? And, um, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
An approved, approved purchase of thirty tasers for the APD, Alice Police Department over a five-year period.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion stands as stated. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Agenda item number nine. Discuss, consider, and act upon a resolution of the City Council of the City of Alice, Texas, authorizing budget allocation of hotel occupancy tax funds from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Reserve for permissible uses to Tejano Roots Hall of Fame Museum for the nineteenth Annual Tejano Roots Ceremony, to be held on January fourth, two thousand and nineteen, through January fifth, two thousand and nineteen, at the Jim Wells County Fairgrounds in accordance with City Ordinance Number two thousand and fifty-eight.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Mr. Ruben Lopez is here. Uh, you want to speak on this, Mr. Lopez? Okay. This is a standard, um, application that we've had for the last few years from Tejano Roots.
Mayor and City Council, uh, thank you for allowing us to come in front of y'all. I'd like to introduce to you my board of directors. Uh, one is, uh, Mr. Noe Lerma out of Corpus Christi, and my brother Ted Lopez, the Vice President of Tejano Roots.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having us this evening. Once again, it's, uh, another, another time of the year that we're asking for your support and help for our nineteenth annual Tejano Roots, uh, induction ceremony weekend that's gonna be coming up. We are the only organization, uh, in the state of Texas recognized by the state of Texas. A big stamp for Alice, Texas, a, a bill signed into law by Rick Perry, uh, once, uh, the governor, and we're so proud of that. It, it's the time to recognize our own Tejano Stars, not only from Alice, Texas, but through the, through the state of Texas and throughout the United States. So, asking for your support and your help so that we can, uh, once again, uh, do this in a right way to recognize our own Tejano Stars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ted Lopez, Vice President, and I want to just share with you guys what the organization, organization does by you guys helping us create this, uh, project that we have, uh, at the beginning of the year. Uh, we do bring people from out of state, uh, to stay at our hotels, uh, eat our places, so we bring revenue to the city. Also, we provide, we're one of the two organizations in town of Alice that provides free concerts for the public, uh, no, at no cost. So, everything, we invite people from out of, out of the city, uh, fifty-mile radius or a hundred-mile radius, or even out of the state, that they'll come out into our, uh, events and spend money and stay at the hotels. Everything's about bringing things to Alice, and with y'all's help, uh, I know we can do it. We've been doing it for the last couple of years with y'all's help. Hopefully, we can do this again this year. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Mr. Molina?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Chris?
Mayor, I'd like to...
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, uh, this year's gonna be held at the, uh, kickoff dance at the Casey Hall, and of course, we're gonna be moving into the Jim Wells Fairgrounds. We, we had a lot of people last year, it's kind of getting crowded, so we're gonna move it out there. We're very excited to do that. Uh, also, we're putting Tejano Roots back in the map again. Uh, we had a gentleman, uh, from the Governor's Office of the, uh, Texas Music Box, and, uh, they're making a website from up north all the way down, and once the website's up, they'll click out, they'll, uh, they showed us, Tejano Roots comes up, also, our, uh, one of our own, Raul Dela Cruz burial, that we took pictures, we're gonna do the, the, the vigita, different, uh, historical things here, and adds it from the music. Another thing that we're working on also, that we're very excited, uh, we got the, uh, forum. Uh, as you walk into the, the Tejano Roots, the, the walkway, we're gonna repair that, and if Corpus Christi have a Hall of, uh, Fame, uh, star, we're also gonna do that here in Alice. So, we're gonna, if you can imagine, walking there, both sides, maybe a twelve-by-twelve, maybe a little bit more, both sides, and of course, Mr. Shano Cadena from Alice here was, uh, uh, introduced, or, I mean, to, uh, uh, recognized in the Corpus Christi area. So, if they can do that, we can do it also. So, again, that's gonna be something that, uh, Alice people, uh, I mean, surrounding people from all area, uh, up north, when they come and visit the museum, will be able to come and see that also. So, we're very excited about that also. Keeping the dream, keeping the dream. If you had a chance to meet JV, Tony Morris, and Dr. Rito Silva, I mean, that was their dream. And, and, uh, I've been with the organization for about nine years to ten years, and it's, it's hard work, you know? It's, every, we finish here, and we take a little break, and then we, we do the same fire. So, we're very excited to, to still continue what we're doing, uh, and remembering those gentlemen, and, uh, again, we ask for your support, Mayor and City Council, to, again, to, uh, help us with this nineteenth annual Noche de Fiesta. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Mayor, all the paperwork is in order like it has been, um, so there are requests in the, uh, from the city, the eighty-two-hundred, uh, eighty-two-hundred dollars. Uh, y'all have the eighteen-hundred from the CVB already, correct?
Uh, we have not spent any money yet, uh, right now, but we do have, uh, all the, all paperwork in line.
Um, Ms. Canasco, any questions?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Chris?
The, the induction itself is gonna be where this time?
It's gonna be at the Jim Wells Fairgrounds on Saturday, January the fifth.
Okay. 'Cause in the past, you've held it at the VFW, but it's been...
Yes, sir.
Packed.
Back, uh, and also, we're, we're gonna move it, we're trying to do some different stages there also, and, and, uh, hopefully, you'll be able to join us that night, because it's gonna be different. Uh, we, you know, we have a lot of people coming up, uh, inductees, uh, from out of state, and they're just excited, so we'd like to wait till we get, uh, approval from the city to continue. We'll see, uh, social media. We're also gonna have, uh, the, our radio station, like, we have B-Ned Radio, B-Ned radios for troops. There, they put it all over the place, so, uh, there's a lot of Tejanos in the military, and also, uh, they're gonna do it kind of like the football, you know? They're gonna be now interviewing, things like that, for the people that are able to join us that night.
And then Friday night will take place?
Friday night will be at the Casey Hall, and, uh, of course, we will have the, uh, Lucky Joe will be with us. We have a, a gentleman, Ben Benjamin, and also, Tony Lopez, Isso Conunto. So, we have great, and it's free. So, uh, what else can, uh, people come by and, uh, stay overnight and, and spend some money here in Alice, Texas?
That's good. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Molina, no questions?
I'd just like to add that, uh, my, my son's actually a country singer. He actually played there one night, uh, a couple of years back, and it was standing room only at the VFW, so I can, I can see how, you know, people come from all over for it, and, uh, I could only be there a little while, you just could have, just, you know, if you had a table, then you're okay, but, yeah.
Yeah.
It's my neck.
Thank you.
Good cause.
Um, Mr. Lopez, when will the work be done to the museum?
Uh, probably, we've, actually, we wanted it started before, but we had a lot of rain, and we've just been busy with different things, trying to read all the bios. I'm gonna say probably after the year, hopefully, we'll get the better weather. Uh, the next, uh, forty-five days is gonna be rough. We're just about to put out the, the names of nominees, and we have to make sure that , uh, we get the hotels filled out, make sure we send the tickets, uh, sell the tables, everything that comes around, make sure that the plan of action for the, uh, seating and all the good stuff that's gonna be required now, uh, to, to hold the event out there, and then after that, uh, we'd like to, 'cause I think...
Oh, so the museum won't be, won't be presentable before the event?
No, it's, it's open.
Uh-huh, but you said you were gonna do some work to it, like...
Yeah, we're gonna do the, the stars.
And the stars and all that. So, that'll be done before the event?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. So, no.
There's, we gotta do Seaman Florida.
Yeah.
All that good stuff, so, not, not forty-five days.
No.
But the museum, it is open, uh, also...
What are your hours, Mr. Lopez?
Uh, it's open on Saturdays, and also, with the help of the Chamber, uh, we have private, uh, tours.
What are the hours? I've been asked so many times, and...
Ten to two. The only time we, I may not be on this, we have, uh, certain things that we travel, and if you know, some of your social media with us, we lost our mother this year, so some of it, uh, has not been open like we used to. So some has not been open like we used to. I hope people understand the difficult times that we've gone through.
Okay, so the hours are 10 to 2?
10 to 2 on Saturdays.
And then private showings?
Private showings, they call the Chamber of Commerce, Juan does a great job in bringing us the information, and we'll meet them there, and they go in there, and they, like the gentleman from, his name is Stephen Ray from the government office.
It's kind of like by appointment only also, yeah.
Uh.
Line it up.
Usually, the winner Texans, that's where they take it around. They come out here, they kick it, click on Alice, and, or they call the Chamber and says, hey, I hear you have a museum, Tejano Roots, they're interested, so we'll meet them at 2:00 in the afternoon with my work schedule, we'll go in there in the afternoon early, things like that. But most of the time, the museum is open from 10 to 2.
On Saturday?
On Saturday.
Okay, so no work will be done to it, other than?
No, there's no way we could finish. This is just something that I said that is coming up.
Oh.
Like the one, like the one they have in San Antonio, and they have it in Corpus and all over the place. We want to do that. That's how we want to put Tejano Roots back in the map also with that.
Very good. And so we will have something in Alice, because I just don't like, you know, it not being in Alice and supported by Alice. So we are going to have the dances or the music on the Friday night?
Yes, here in Alice.
And then the actual?
Event here in Alice.
But then the actual awards and stuff will be Saturday at the Jim Wells County?
Yes. Friday, the dance, award ceremony on Saturday.
And the, what did you say the radio station was?
92.1. We have BNET Radio.
BNET, right?
BNET. They're out of Houston, they've been with Tejano for years, even prior to me.
Out of Houston?
Out of Houston. You can go to BNETRadio.com.
Oh, dot com.
Dave Beyande is the owner of the region, big supporter, and of course, we have a lot of, actually, last year, we had like six or seven internet radios. So if you had a chance, anybody that went, they were all on one side. We just didn't have room, you know. You were, Chris, you were there. And so when the people go out there, the inductees, they get to go in there and talk to all the people from the valley up north and everything. And that's something that we didn't have before a couple of years, but as we travel and we shore-facing, we present the Tejano Roots, they want to be part of, they want to be with the winning team, and that's what we are.
So what's the difference, if I may ask, I don't know, Mr. Molina, you might know, how, what the difference in seating is from the KC Hall or VFW to the fairgrounds?
The Merchants Building compared to VFW? Huge.
It's like twice the size, it's huge.
Yeah, but the seating, like the actual ones, because you're going to do tables and stuff, right?
Right. Same format, same thing, is we have more room.
Nobody knows an exact number?
Well, I mean, it's as many tables as they decide to bring in, because it's just more space available.
Whatever the VFW has, I think seating is about 500 and something, the fairgrounds will be more.
I wonder what that number is. I'm curious to know that number. I'll ask, I'll get a fire marshal. Is Patrick in here? No? Patrick? No? Because a fire marshal wouldn't know the number. Yeah, because there's, I mean, there has to be a capacity number. So I just, I mean, I've done a lot of events in there. And the other question, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did say it was no admission?
On Friday.
Okay, so on your, on your application, you have $12 general admission per table?
That's correct, that's general admission, and then we sell tables, reserved tables for $125 seating of six.
So it's not free?
No, not on Saturday.
But Friday, it's completely free?
It's completely free.
Free to the public, but not Saturday?
That is correct.
Okay.
For the induction.
For the induction, yes.
And you know, I was saying, I was going to say, it's pretty neat. It feels very, very big, you know, picture when you, when these, they get their awards and they come off, and they get interviewed by one radio station, and they get interviewed by another radio station, and they get interviewed by another radio station. And not to say that it's not a big deal, but we're a small town, and for something like that to go on, and like you said, to have seven of them in here, and that BNET Radio was a pretty cool deal, because they were there also two years ago, sitting off to the side, and I was checking out, you know, I was on my phone, listening to my, you know, sitting there and trying to check out both at the same time. It's a pretty interesting deal that they can put that out to.
They're also here at the Cinco de Mayo, so, you know, we, especially our troops, you know, that's why we're able to do what we can do, and be out here and be supported and be City Council, mayors, and things like that, because of them. So that's one thing that we've always done, to make sure that they get to hear it. And a lot of, a lot of the inductees, believe it or not, are veterans. You know, they used to take their accordions and guitars out there, you know, because there was no music, so they learned different tones and things like that and bring them back.
And Mr. Lopez, where will you be advertising? I see it's 1,800 on your budget.
Yeah, we do the, we do BNET Radio, we do the here in Alice with our website, we do San Antonio, the, Jerry Benaville's, KEDA? KEDA, we do San Antonio.
What is that one?
KEDA.
It's K-E-D-A.
K-E-D-A? And that's a radio station?
Yes, that's Jerry Benaville's, the one that you still own here, the one here in Alice.
Okay.
We do, let me see, what else do we do? Well, everything else is more advertising than the $1,800. Everything else, we pay for them. So we spend more than the $1,800.
But the website's free. The website's free? Because it's your website, right?
You have to pay them. You have to pay the radio station, but the radio station also has a website.
Right.
Right.
But that's usually packaged. But you said you're going to do your website advertising?
I said, no, we do the radio station here.
BNET and KEDA?
And the radio station has the internet also, so they get to, everybody hear the advertisement.
Okay.
Is this your first year there at the Merchants?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Alice, Texas authorizing budget allocations of hotel occupancy tax funds from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Reserve permissible use Tejano Roots Hall of Fame Museum for the 19th Annual Tejano Roots Ceremony to be held on January 4th through January 5th, 2019 at the Jim Wells County Fairgrounds, as well as at the, it's not the KC Hall anymore, what's it called now?
Oh.
Venue formerly known as the KC Hall, in accordance with the City Ordinance Number 2058.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, same sign? Okay, motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
If we'll just remember to include City of Alice on all advertising, as per the laws and rules of the HOD funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 10, hear status report on October 2018, month-ending financial statements and summary of funds.
Mayor, Finance Director Roland Ramos is going to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Hi, Mr. Roland.
Hello. Good evening, Roland. We have the financials for the month ending in October 31st, 2018. We should be at about 8.33% of our budget at this point. Our general fund revenues were $231,047, which is 1.82%. We really don't have much to report on as far as property tax or sales tax as far as revenues through October. If you remember last month, I was able to report property tax for the full year, and that was about, I think, 94%, a little over $4 million. Well, because of the lag on sales tax, the two-month lag, now we have sales tax for the whole year, which is not reported in the October. But I'm going to go ahead and give it to you, to you guys. I'll point it. Point it this way.
Into the, into the door.
Into the office.
The ether.
What are you doing?
Or not?
Chet the war at the battery, right?
You can just click it from there.
Can we just click it for him?
Go ahead.
I'll tell you. Okay, I need the second, on Exhibit B. There you go. This is sales tax for the whole year from October through September. This is budget versus actual, and the 2018 is actually the revised actual number. We revised it to $6,82,983, and it actually, we ended the year at $6,441,977. So that was actually a $358,994 increase from the revised budget. Total collections for the full year, fiscal year 2018 as compared to 2017, 2018, we ended at $6,441,977. 2017 was $5,386,210, and that's a increase of $1,055,767. So we ended the year over a million in 2018 as opposed to 17, so that's a good little increase for us. Occupational and mixed beverage tax, we only had 845. That and the franchise licenses and permits are quarterly also, so we haven't collected in October. The intergovernmental, we have $8,333, so that's almost 11% revenues for intergovernmental. Charges for services were $4,392. That's about 18.26%, a little over 18. Fines and forfeitures, $44,838, which is a little over, I mean, almost 15%. Miscellaneous revenue was $8,198, or a little over 12%. And interfund transfers, $164,442, or 8.33%. Our general fund expenditures for the month of October, same thing, we had some payments at the beginning, TML, software payments and other things that hit at the beginning of the year, so it kind of skews your expenses. Total expenditures for the general fund were $975,777, and that's about 7.75%. General service, right off the bat, is 21%. That's due to our TML payment at the beginning of the year, which was $139,513. So our finance administration, that's about 14%, and that's due to the seller payment for our software and Jim Wells County collections that we pay for the collections on that. Fire department and police department actually both ended up under, a little over 6%. Our street maintenance, 6.44%. Parks and playgrounds, 6.37%. Library was a little over 9%. And for the Exhibit E, we have revenues versus expenditures for all funds. So our general fund was in a negative, $744,729. Our solid waste fund was, had revenues exceeding expenses of $49,677. Our utility fund was $104,498. Airport was $3,556, and that's including the $966 per month, monthly transfer from the general fund. The golf course was $4,896, and that's including a $4,708 monthly transfer. The hotel occupancy tax, same thing, we collect that quarterly, so that was the negative, $9,319. And the multi-use complex was short, $8,986, and that also includes a $5,391 monthly increase from the general fund, a monthly transfer. And that concludes the financial. I don't know if you have any questions? There's not much to report for the month of October.
No revenue.
No revenue.
Any questions, Counsel? Mr. Molina?
No questions.
Mr. Chris?
Yeah, I'd like to see if you have a number, or Ms. Vanessa, if y'all have a number. We, and this is just to show that the city is actually doing better and that we're moving forward. We revised the budget to the $6 million for the sales tax revenues, but what was that original number?
Yep. It was 440.
440, something like 440.
440 times 12.
440 times 12, okay, that's, oh shoot. My 2 doesn't work, there it goes. So 5.28 million.
Yes.
So relatively, we made, we received over a million, just under a million-two over budget from our original budget set forward. Now, we did undershoot what the state comptroller estimated for us, but it wasn't a million-two. So the city is progressing on the whole, we are receiving more money, people are going back to work, and they're spending it in Alice, Texas. Thank you, God. And so, things are looking up, and I just wanted to point that out, that it doesn't look like there's much of a jump there, when you see that we revised the budget and then, oh yeah, it's over by, you know, $360,000. No, it's over by $1.2 million from what we thought it was when we started the year.
That's correct.
So, okay, aside from that, I guess it's just hard to, like you said, there's absolutely no revenues for October.
Not until we start collecting property taxes.
Right.
Yeah. And that's the way it is. We're always about a month and a half behind on sales tax revenues, so we never really catch up, and October always looks bad because there's no month where we get a check for this fiscal year.
That's correct.
We never get paid.
Yeah. So it looks like we don't make anything at all in October, and we don't. So, but we make it up, make up for it in October when you have to backdate it to September and we get all, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco?
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, Roland.
Great job. Thank you. Agenda item number 11, the council may enter into closed executive session to discuss the following pursuant to, the City Council may enter into closed or executive session to discuss the following pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 Personnel Related Matters. Chief of Police review, deliberate, and discuss Chief of Police applications, alternatives, processes, and actions regarding interview, interviewing, selection, employment, assignment, and establishing salary range. The time is now 7:56, and Counsel will go into closed session. The time is now 8:43, Counsel will return to open session. Agenda item number 12, and it's up there. Okay, return to open session.
That's it?
So no discussion needed on those session items. Okay, agenda item number 13, adjourn and/or consider and act upon adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This meeting is adjourned, the time is now 8:44 PM. Thank you for everybody here, Counsel and staff, and everybody watching at home. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
What was that noise up there?